PM. This was supposed to be held at the council chambers, but due to COVID, we're having virtual. So the record of attendance, I see everybody is present except for the mayor and he has excluded himself. For conflict of interest. On this matter. Second thing we need is the approval of the agenda. That this agenda be approved as presented. So I have a first and a seconder. I see. This councillor Blanchard and councillor Heenan's hands. So first and second. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Is that a contrary minded? No. Okay, Carrie. So disclosure of conflict, just the mayor. And so we don't have a presentation, I'm told tonight on this, correct? Mr. Spear? So we're hearing of objection, of objections, we're down to E1, the bylaw 21-05. A bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Terrace Street. This is. The first time, correct? The council of the town of St Andrews is holding a public meeting to hear objections to the proposal of the bylaw 21-05. A bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Terrace Street. So do I need a first and a seconder, Mr. Spear? No. So all we need is, are there any? Discussion on this, or do we just go to the vote?
If I may, Deputy Mayor, I'll just give a real quick highlight of what this is, in case the viewing public missed it. So the town of St Andrews has undeveloped roadway that is really an extension of Victoria Terrace. That goes from Prentice Royal Street to north of the developed portion of Frederick Street. We've been requested by joining landowners to have it declared. Not usable by the town. And so this is really the first step in converting it from a street back into usable space. And so this is just to hear objections to get the public's opinion on this. We had. Reading one of the bylaw, I believe, last, the first of September meeting. And so this is the notice of objection that to hear any public input into this bylaw. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
So did we have any objections that were written in? I didn't receive any, but did? Did any come in?
To the clerk, Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Knopper?
Deputy Mayor, we've received no written correspondence or emailed or verbal correspondence in regards to. Any conflict of interest or hearings of objection to. By law 2105.
Okay, and did we have anything from social media or anything else, Mr. Knopper?
Your worship, we don't accept through social media, so anybody would have to submit through email or.
Questions?
Question, or they could send questions to P Knopper, so P N O P P E R at town of St Andrews, S T Andrews dot C A. As well if any members of the public wish to speak to council regarding this, this is the time to do so. If you would like, please contact me. At that email address and I will load you up to speak to council. Other than that, your worship or the deputy mayor, we are. You have to leave a little bit of time for people to give a response. So. If anybody wishes to ask a question.
What is the time limit on this?
So our next meeting is starts at 6:45ish. In previous situations where we received no. Correspondence, the general process is to leave it open for five minutes or so. And then if there's any other questions from council, they can resume that, bring those forward. But again, this is a public hearing for the public, so. We have to leave it open for that.
So we just wait the time?
You, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper.
Oh, no, sorry, Deputy Mayor, just know, note that there's, has been no discussion on social media anyway. Just as a note, we don't accept questions that way, but it hasn't. Garnered any attention there either.
Sorry.
I guess if anyone is watching this and still wants to get in contact with council later, there'll be a second reading on next Monday's meeting. And then third reading could either be later in the month or the first meeting in November. So if you have any concerns, council can still accept correspondence based on this. This is just a formal meeting. For community discussion, letters can still be received over the next few weeks.
Was that the bell? The bell is, we could go on now?
That's my supper, I gotta fall out of the oven. I'll be right back.
Thanks.
Again, to the public, if you have any questions or wish to make a comment in regards to the public hearing of objections, you can email me, P Knopper, P N O P P E R. At town of St Andrews dot C A. The poll will be open for another three minutes.
And nothing has come in, Mr. Knopper?
Your worship, nothing has come in at this time. No, we're at 6:39. You can go one more minute or leave it to you.
One more minute, I think. We have to do it.
Your Deputy Mayor, it is now 6:40.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopper. Seeing that we haven't had any emails to Mr. Knopper. About. An objection to this stopping up of Victoria Terrace.
Yeah.
It will be.
Your worship, hold on. I did just receive one question.
Thank you.
One second, it just came in at the last second. Apologies, council, it's just loading. It's being slow.
Sorry.
Just being slow with my, my email is loading, it's just being slow. So your worship, these got sent from Joanne and Rob Cardy, and it's once from Joanne Cardy, I have a second one from Rob Cardy. Question, there's a series of questions here. There's three, four questions from Joanne Cardy. First one is, is it not reasonable that the 35 feet of street be sold at a fair market value to the developers?
Worship and clerk, we don't really need to answer questions. It's a meeting for them to state presentations and reasons for objections. It's not an open debate.
It's not a question.
We can certainly take the questions into consideration and not cutting out discussion, but it's not the purpose of a, of a notice of objections. So if there's anything, if there's any substantive statement of objection or support.
It should not be close. Alright, so is there a question, is there a, an objection to the, in that email, Mr. Knopper?
Um, what I'm seeing, they are just questions. Um. Turned out to be two units. There's questions on design of affordability of affordable housing and affordable format, but that's. Not part of that process. So there was no questions within the objection to that.
They're not stating they have.
No, they're not stating they have a, they're just, they're questions regarding price of property. And affordable housing and affordable housing design. They are not objecting to it.
Alright, so then we don't have a response for them and we will, we will discuss it later or bring it up when we are discussing it.
So your worship, we can bring these questions forward to council during your discussion for second reading. If we should review and provide feedback at that point.
Alright. Thank you.
And yeah, your worship, just to be specific, this is very specific to the closure of the street by law. I'm not saying their questions are legitimate, but it's kind of getting ahead of ourselves and the types of questions they're asking. And certainly it'll be forwarded to council. For deliberation because it sounds like they're legitimate questions, just not appropriate for this specific.
For this hearing of objections. Alright, thank you, Mr. Spear. So that being said, and we have no other email. Of an objection.
Your worship, I've got the objection that has now been written in from the Cardys.
Okay.
I will read the objection. I object to the land is being given free and not at fair market value, Joanne Cardy.
Okay.
Your worship, that hasn't been established yet, just for the record. We were just, this is just the first process to determine if council's willing to, to think of disposing of it and the conditions of disposal have not been. Have been discussed.
All we're looking at, yeah, all we're looking at is stopping the street up right now, correct?
Correct, and if you do dispose that, you still have lots of options considering, considering that.
Okay, thank you. So they will get an opportunity to. To voice their opinion at a later date when we're discussing this, correct?
Well, and this correspondence.
Yes.
Will be concluded in future and we may talk about it during the committee meeting, just so you know what the next steps are. Which that may tie into, but it's just, this is just objection to the specific bylaw on the closing up of the street and not any future development based around that street as a whole. You just have to be aware.
This is just stopping the street up. Any questions, council? No? Alright. Then, so we closed the hearing of objections. And there's no question period. So then I am asking for a motion of adjournment, correct?
Correct.
Then I have some, Mr. Councillor Heena? Seconder? Do we need a seconder?
Yeah, councillor Blanchard, your worship.
Councillor Blanchard. Thank you. Alright, council, see you in about five minutes when we go back to another meeting and the mayor's back. Thank you.
Underway. So we will call together the committee of council meeting here on Monday, September 27th, 6:45. And we're doing this via Zoom due to the new restrictions that are in place. It's easier for us to be heard. On Zoom without mask and of course it allows for us to safely distance. So. I appreciate council with a quick transition to Zoom, but we're going to get underway. So the first thing is, let's do a record of attendance. I note that all members of council are here, so we'll get right into the agenda. Could I have someone move to approve the agenda? I see councillor hurdle and seconded by councillor Blanchard. Any changes to the agenda that are required this evening? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody. The agenda has been approved. Disclosure of conflict of interest. I know it's, you know, it is committee meeting, so we're not going to get into the motions per se, but just like the previous meeting, I'll be declaring. Basically a conflict on bylaw 21-05, which should be under Public Works, but I'll just, at that point. Turn my camera off and Deputy Mayor Akagi, you're so kind, could lead it one more time. Is there any other conflicts of interest?
None for me.
Okay, seeing none. So at this point, we're going to jump into presentations, which there is none. And no correspondence at this time that I'd like to share. So we'll get right into the introduction, consideration of passing of bylaws. And we will start with Deputy Mayor Akagi.
Thank you, your worship. The reference number is F A 210906. And it's the Heather Curling Club lease, the agreement for 2021 to 2022. So the background is this, the town of St Andrews and the Heather Curling Club are preparing for the 2021 and 2022 season. As part of this process, a new lease agreement has been drafted for approval by council. Both parties are mutually agreed with the agreement with two modifications from the 2020, 2020 to 2021 lease. And they are. One, one additional key to the arena will be provided to the executive. The Heather Curling Club will be issued a total of four keys. Town staff, two, town staff is recommending a lease rate of $29,576 plus tax for the season. This lease rate is the same as the 2019 and 2020 season to help support the club's recovery from COVID-19. So the motion is this, that council approves the Heather Curling Club lease agreement for the 2021 to the 2022 season. So we will bring that forward in the, the October 4th meeting, but this is, is it sound alright, council?
Any concerns on that one? Looks pretty good to me. Okay, we'll move to the next one, Deputy Mayor.
Or. Excuse me. The next one is F A 210907. And it's the 2021 to the 2026 capital investment plan for the gas tax fund administrative agreement amendment. So the background is this, as part of the ongoing commitment to assist with the funding of capital infrastructure projects. The federal and provincial governments partner in an ongoing program called the Gas Tax Fund. The overall pool is allocated to both municipalities and local service districts based on the overall population. For the town of St Andrews, the annual allocation for 2021 was 128,668. 128,668, sorry, 128,668,000 dollars. In addition, the government of Canada has a one-time top-up fund in 2021 of 124,758. Projects that funding can current, can currently be allocated to our roads and trails. The town would like to amend the five-year plan to include above-ground and in-ground infrastructure of the water and wastewater system. By adding these assets to the plan will allow the town to use the gas tax funds towards the renewal. Of the water and wastewater infrastructures. So our motion will be, be it moved that the document. The town of St Andrews five-year capital investment plan for the gas tax fund administrative agreement 2021 to 2026. Be amended to include wastewater and wastewater infrastructure and adopted. Are there any questions on that?
Okay, so that sounds like that motion would just give us more flexibility. Is there any questions on that?
Council, there'd be a slight amendment to the motion. It's not quite exactly worded as it needs to be, but it won't be substantially changed. It just has to match the motion that's on page 15 and 45. And so, but you will hardly notice it, but just for those that are looking at details, you'll notice a slight adjustment by the time it gets to next week's meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you for, thank you for the heads up, but it sounds like it's just a friendly little amendment to it, just from a technical standpoint. Okay, so since it doesn't seem in principle anything wrong with it, the motion itself will change its wording. I think we can move on from that one. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, for reading those motions. The next one isn't a motion, but it is a discussion regarding the parking lights for vehicles at the W C O'Neill Arena Complex. Which was submitted by Mr. And Mrs. Raflub. At this time, I would look to Mr. Spear. There is a staff report, but I don't know if you'd like to kind of kick it off just to give the background and. Then we could have a discussion as a council on how we proceed forward.
Thank you, worship. Mr. And Mrs. Raflub live in the corner of Alexander Crescent and Reed Avenue, right across the arena. So I think three years ago, we expanded the parking in front of the arena. So that cars were able to park and as you know, they're at angled parking facing Reed Avenue. The Raflubs have concerns because the light that's given off by the cars as they come and go and during the winter, some of them. Maybe leaving their lights on, you know, extended periods as they warm up the car. So the, so the last, the Raflubs worked through the mayor and I, and then eventually the last council through it. And we provided several options there. The thing that's important to remember about the arena is once you get past that driveway, there's quite a steep embankment there. And it's also very long, you know, from, from the one corner of the arena to the other. So the various options that the Raflub suggested and staff brought them forward was, well, we could plant hedges or trees. But you know, it'd take them a dozen years to get tall enough because where you'd plant them would probably be three to four feet below the level of the cars or the headlights. A fence, same type of problem. You have to have extraordinarily high fence right in front of the arena, which probably wouldn't be what people wanted. We could eliminate some of the parking spots. There'd be residual light. From adjoining because light, the nature of light, of course, but it, we'd lose about a quarter of the spots, we're estimating four to six parking spots. And so what the final solution council had come up with, the last council, was that we offered to buy them darkening curtains. That would basically shut out the light from the. From it going into, but they weren't particularly keen of that because they want to be able to maintain their view during the winter. One options they've been going on, creates a problem for us is they're saying to do backend parking. But A, that'd be hard to enforce because you'd have to have an employee of the town of St Andrews out there making sure everyone's doing that. But B, as you know, it's angled parking and angled parking is meant to be front forward parking. Because you go in, when you back out to get out, it's just very easy. If you're going to get people to try to turn around and park it backwards at an angle, it's very awkward. And on street parking, it's actually considered illegal to park headlights out in angled parking. So that's where it sets, but the Ray Flubs have brought it forward again for this council's consideration on whether you will. Make further instruction to staff and finding a solution. But, you know, the staff is extremely sympathetic, but there isn't a lot of easy solutions. Wouldn't interfere with snow removal. You also should be aware that there's lots of lights going into houses within the downtown. You're thinking of all the various corners and things. And especially if there's a T where it's not a four-way intersection, but you have road that's going up and like Marine Science Drive. Where there's houses right across from the intersection, then you have, setting the same problem. So you might open up a can of worms or set a president you don't want to set. If you start creating barriers for light because of residents. But back to, it was the town that created it, but it's, you know, we're trying our best to have people, we have no idling signs up there as best we can, but as. As everyone's aware, newer model cars, the lights automatically come on and of course they have the LED lights, which make the situation a bit worse. So staff is looking if there's any further instruction from council on this matter.
Alright, thank you very much for that summary, Mr. Spear. And again, the report is attached. All council members have had an opportunity to review that. I have a couple of quick questions is. Right now, where are the accessible parking spots located at the arena? Are they on the side still?
Yes, and the reason is that those locks weren't wide enough. And so in order to make it work at the arena, we would have had to turn the accessible parking sideways.
Okay, so you can't do angled accessible parking, is that correct?
Well, not with what we have, we'd have to take out. But if you remember, there's two spaces that are right in front of the building behind the angled parking, one or two spaces. Right beside the steps at the arena. But so there are a couple of spots right there.
Okay, I was gonna say, because if they're on the side, that actually is closer. And that might be a solution. The other thing that I was thinking of in, just today, unfortunately, but. Since afternoon is with the welcome center now being on the other side of the, of the arena. Would there be an opportunity to reverse that one way, where if you reverse the one way, all of the angled parking spots would be parking, facing more towards the Irving Lot versus their home? I don't, and I'm thinking of as I come in town, I'm looking for visitor information, that quick left if I'm coming into town might be easier than finding it going around. The whole, you know, intersection and then up and then over. I'm just, these are solutions that I don't think we talked about last time, and I was just thinking of today. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
So we had this discussion actually among staff back at the day of the, when the welcome center moved over. One problem we have with that is that if you're thinking about, the reason it's situated the way it is, is because if kids are getting out of their cars, they're coming up. Harriet and turning into the arena. And so the passenger side of the car is against the door instead of crossing in front of traffic. Is why it's built that way because remembering it was initially almost like a little street, there was no parking there. We have to repaint everything. Lines don't disappear really well, those street lines. It can be done. It may be a good idea to do it, but it's not going to be easy, especially this late in the season to be able to, to get paint, paint to hold with the weather so cold. It's not impossible, but it's, it's not the easiest.
No, but it might be just a situation where it's the last year that it's like this, and at least there's a, a finish line, like, like a, a lot of people have a little bit more patience and they know it's going to change. So. I don't know, I understand the reasoning behind that. And the other question is that we'd never be able to do the angled parking on the other side of the, the drive-in because of the fire lane, is that correct? You got to keep it mainly clear, or would it be possible to drive by, then you park facing the arena with an angled parking spot?
To be determined, I guess I'd have to look. It's a good idea, but it's. Yeah, because you want the drop-off close to the. Steps and then because of the, you've got the two accessible parking spots right there, they're taking up a lot of the areas. So I guess we'd have to look at how to redesign that, to be honest. It's not a bad idea. It probably could be done, but no, we haven't had that discussion, so I can't make a, a good comment on that at this point. I guess we could just do a staff report and look at it. Next meeting, if you like.
It may not be feasible. I'm throwing a lot of stuff at you. I just, I just dove into the council package a little longer this afternoon to think of other solutions. Any other member of council, any other questions? Deputy Mayor Akagi.
I met with the Raflubs and saw their lovely breakfast note. It is awkward and I know that they're getting rid of the cedar hedge due to the destruction by the deer. And they're not planning to put a fence up. I like the idea of what you've come up with, Mayor. I had thought of that, whether we could change the direction of that. Excuse me, the nose in being from. Excuse me, the nose in being from, um, the top of Alexander Crescent going up the hill. I don't know how that would affect the traffic on the other end and the tourist bureau being there, how it would affect, but it is, it is something to think about. I think that's a good way to think about it because the other ways that we tried to think about it, we are going to set a precedence for everybody who has lights who shine in their, their homes and we'd have to do something about it. Putting a fence up is not feasible, um. Mr. Acton said that it, you know, the plow has to push the snow that way, so I guess we're between a rock and a hard place when it comes to that, but, um, I did tell them that we'd bring it forward and we'd have a discussion with this new council because on the last council, we had the discussion and we didn't, we didn't think of the opposite way. And I'm not sure that we can do it. Maybe it can't be done for this year, but maybe for next year, um, when the weather is better and we paint it and try it, uh, at least for a year to see whether or not the angled parking going that way would be in that vacant lot, so it wouldn't be affecting a lot of houses there. So it might be something to look at for staff to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I saw Council Heenan's hand, I believe, as well.
Thank you, your worship and council. I just had a few notes made on this because I went through it and I went up and had a look. People across from Tim Hortons experienced the exact same situation. People idle their cars and they go right into the glass windows of their houses across the street. We also have issues, um, a lot of people complain about streetlights that they're coming into their house as well. And I agree with Deputy Mayor Akagi that we can't really set a precedence because if we do, we could have people after Inbee Power, Tim Hortons, et cetera. I'm all in agreement and, and full sympathy for this. I personally live under the, the lights because I have tons of windows and I accept the fact that this is the way it is and I have bought blinds that stop the light. That's just my viewpoint. I'm just really concerned that if council agrees to something that's very costly, that we will have opened a can of worms that, um, that we really can't afford to open. Because you can go anywhere, uh, that lights reflected. People go down to the pub. I mean, there's lights shining in everyone's window. I mean, there are people here on my street that complain, but there's not much, I mean, you, you can, you're, you're responsible to a degree for your own property and the protection of it. And if the lights are an issue, then there's a simple solution of putting up a two, one or two sections of fence. And the other point is that in the winter time, uh, I've been up there where the, where the plow has plowed high mounds of snow. I can't foresee the lights ever getting through the high mounds of snow that are parked when the, when the snow is pushed there because I used to call Bingo on Tuesday night and there was never any issue with lights because the snow was piled so high. So during the dark part of the winter, there's snow there. So I just, as I say, as much as I have great sympathy, I also, um, want to protect us as a council and not open cans of worms that we can't afford to create. That's, that's all I'd like to say, your worship.
Thank you, Council, Council Heenan. Any other member of council like to weigh in on this one?
Uh, just quickly, uh, your, your worship, uh, just to note that, uh, Mr. Rafflub was a great friend of the arena, uh, doing, uh, power skating for, uh, many, many years. And, uh, um, was a great friend to the, to the town. Um, I, I do think that if we were to switch the, uh, the direction of the traffic going into the arena and the medical center, um, it would just mean that you couldn't exit there at Alexander Crescent, so we'd have to funnel all the traffic around to the over, between the, uh, the, uh, antique shop and, uh, like the youth center exit there. So if all the traffic came out that exit and went the other way, you could do it and could you also use a crosswalk? So I think the switching the traffic is, uh, is a very possible solution.
Thank you. Unless any other, oh, I see, uh, Council Hurdle.
I just wanted to bring up the point that if we directed traffic that way and pointed them out onto, onto Harriet, we'd also be directing the streetlights into another resident at that end as well. So, you know, it would be six of one, half a dozen of the other, taking headlights from one way and pointing them another.
Sounds good. So what I'm hearing from council, someone else wants to weigh in, is that, um, the options are the options, uh, but we would like staff just to take a quick look to see with directional, if there's anything that they could do that would minimize it. Then we could quickly come back to it and just say, there's no other options or these the options. Does that make sense to everybody? Because it sounds like, uh, there was a few ideas that Mr. Spear would like to research a little bit further, like parking towards the arena. Uh, and these costs probably would be very minimal. They'd be just paint, right? So, and, um, yeah, so what, does anybody oppose to kind of that direction? That we'll wait to see if staff comes up with any other directional things, because, but as far as building fences, all that stuff, the town at this point is not willing to do that. Deputy Mayor.
Just one more question. The handicap parking, I know where it is at the arena. Would it be possible to put them in the spaces that are causing the problem? Like, would it be possible to put them? There would only be a certain number of people using them. That might alleviate it too. Could staff look at that as well?
I, I think, I think all cards are on the table with staff. Maybe they'll, Terry and Chris and maybe Paul, they'll, they'll go up, take a look and see what they can come up with recommendations. That be safe to say, Mr. Spear?
It is. My only concern for deputy mayors and not objecting to it is that besides the space, you need room to pull in and out, so you're going to eliminate, you know, pull in, pull out space too. If, your worship, I'd like to go back to Council Goomishell's comment though, is he said that people exiting, if we switch the arrows, should go out of, like between the youth center and, uh, the fire or police station. Why?
Well, just, uh, off the top of my head, it seems if you make it a one-way going into the arena, then, uh, you'd, you'd either have to have your two lanes or, or make the whole entrance one way, therefore you got to come out somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess I was just thinking you'd come out the opposite way and turned left on the, you know, like opposite, um, Harriet, or not Harriet, uh, Alexander Crescent, I guess. But the corner instead of someone's house. Anyway, we'll, we'll look at it. Just I couldn't quite figure out what, what, that recommendation.
All right, uh, I think, oh, Council Heenan.
I'm sorry to have one more point or two more points, your worship, but if we do change the direction of the traffic, then of course, as, uh, as Counselor Hertel says, it's going to roll lights into other people's windows. And I'm afraid that the corner of Alexander Street would get a big, like if we changed the direction, there would be lights all the time for people going back into town. So that would be my first point. And my second point is these, uh, these, um, citizens of Saint Andrews have written to council before and we deserve, or they deserve some work done on this and a proper letter sent back to them explaining, uh, our reasoning. Because that's the polite thing to do. Thank you, your worship.
Agreed, Counselor Heenan. Uh, we're gonna, unless council has something new to add, we're gonna move on to the next item, uh, because I think we've with all, unless there's something new, I think we've talked about this one enough for tonight and staff's gonna take a look at it, but Deputy Mayor Akagi.
That was what they requested, was that we receive some formal, um, response. And that's, and I had mentioned that we would do that. Staff is really good about doing that. Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. At this point, we're gonna move on to the next one and I will declare my conflict of interest. So Deputy Mayor, if you'd like to just take it over, we're headed to, uh, Public Works actually, which I believe would be Counselor Blanchard's motion, I believe. So I'll, uh, mute myself and turn my video.
Hey, I'll unmute myself and I will ask for Public Works Chair, uh, Counselor Blanchard to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so reference number P W two-one zero eight zero four. This is a bylaw twenty-one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Terrace Street, the second reading. Um, so the background for this, the town has received a request to permanently close a portion of Victoria Terrace Street for a new housing development to be located at P I D one-five-one eight-eight-five-four-three. To close the portion of Victoria Terrace Street, council has to implement a road closure bylaw. Provided with this motion report is a copy of bylaw twenty-one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of, of part of Victoria Terrace. Uh, first reading was September the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Public here, uh, public hearing of objections was earlier this evening, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And the motion is that council grant leave for the second reading of bylaw twenty-one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure part of Victoria Terrace Street in the town of Saint Andrews. So moved by myself.
So this will come up on October the fourth at our regular meeting. Mr. Spear, this is where the carnies will have the availability to speak on it. Right? You're muted.
Yeah. Yes, your worship, or, yeah, Deputy Mayor, that, that's the carnies. Objections will be included in the council and objections, but their questions will be included as part of the council package, as part of the next step for sure. Because that will require some more, um, input. I don't know if you want to talk about it here during the registers, but I guess just because this is supposed to be just going over the motions, once we get to the registers portion, we'll give you a little more detail.
Thank you. So it will go forward, council, is that correct? You're all right with it? All right, then we will ask the mayor to come back and we will be able to continue on with Counselor Neil.
Thank you once again, Deputy Mayor Akagi. So we will, uh, keep moving along to public safety to Counselor Neil.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, this is reference number P S two-one zero nine zero four. And the subject is COVID nineteen policy for the town of Saint Andrews, September two thousand and twenty-one. The background reads, the province of New Brunswick has implemented new COVID nineteen regulations for indoor spaces as of September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. To align with the provincial regulations, the town has created a new COVID nineteen policy for town facilities. This document can be amended based on the addition or removal of rules. Staff will communicate with all users on the new policy to make them aware of how to participate safely. The new policy covers mandatory masks, proof of vaccination processes and restrictions to accessing facilities if rules are not followed. Provided with this report is a copy of the current policy as of September twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. And the motion reads, the council adopts the COVID nineteen policy for the town of Saint Andrews as part of the province of New Brunswick regulations instituted on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Counselor Neil. Um, just on this motion, Mr. Nopper, uh, because I think you're leading the file around COVID operational plans. Uh, with the light of this package obviously came out three business days in advance. Uh, I was wondering if all of this with the new regulations since then needs to be reworked in any way, or what your thoughts are on what council has before them?
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, yes, with the changes to the, um, mandatory orders, this was prior to the new mandatory orders that were released. Uh, we'll provide you an updated background document, but it'll look very similar to where we were with our previous yellow phases. So you'll get a bit of more of a detailed document, but it, it'll break it down to every, uh, facility that the town owns and operates. So you'll get a little bit more detail. So this, this document that you have now was just the baseline to cover ourselves with the, the, before the mandatory errors. Now that we're back to mandatory orders, it changes, uh, how we function and use, so.
Thanks, Mr. Noppers. So council, uh, we'll just leave this motion as is unless someone does it and we'll see what comes before us. Uh, like the, the big question is, uh, like for the arena is who's checking the vaccine records? Uh, that's the, that's the big one that has to be worked out is, at, at the end of the day, it's the responsibility of the arena, but to have someone tw- you know, every hour that the arena is there waiting, uh, when you better flood the ice and stuff, it's, you can see where the problematic, uh, it would be for an operational plan. So we look forward to, there's some work to be done. I'm sure Mr. Nopper, Mr. Spear on that one is it's, uh, it's not a simple thing to to run an arena right now during COVID times in particular, uh, not let alone youth center and, and all the other facilities. So we look forward to that updated document. We talked about it briefly today, but there's a lot still to figure out. Uh, anything from any other member of council, Mr. Spear?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, worship. I think too, if council doesn't mind, we should have an employee um, policy. There's some, several that have been drafted by other municipalities in the past. Legally, we have to have it. So if council doesn't mind, we'll probably put together our own version, include it with this week's package. And, uh, and just so you're aware, that vaccinations are almost a necessity now, not a luxury. So, um, there's gonna have to be some discussion, but it's really being mandated by provincial orders, not by, um, the will or, or ability of council at this point, but we will include that as a separate document so we can let our employees know what's coming down.
Thank you. I think everybody, uh, knows around COVID, we have to be flexible when it comes to planning and, uh, around documents. So whenever you have all that stuff before us, even if it doesn't go before committee, I think we will add that to the regular meeting and, and kind of, uh, address it, uh, kind of live in the meeting. Um, Council Hurdle.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, your worship. This isn't maybe not necessarily the best form for this, um, but when it comes to, um, the, the vaccine mandates that we see around the, the, the town, it's kind of my attention that, um, a lot of the responsibility for, for enforcing this has fallen on the small businesses in the community. And, uh, u- unfortunately, not everybody is behaving in a way that is making it easy for small businesses to operate. So if, if the town, you know, if something like the arena, we, we, we start to enforce, you know, the vaccination mandatory, um, requirements. Uh, if we have some sort of conflict management, uh, seminar or so- something that we can help people, um, manage this in, in a better way. I know it's a big ask and I haven't really given it too much thought right now, but I, I have heard from several people where they're struggling to know what to do in terms of how they manage this. And any kind of support we can give from, from, from our perspective, I think will be welcome. Um, because they don't really know where to turn at this point. And I've heard some really negative things in the community these days. I'm disheartened to hear that. But if we can offer any sort of support, if, uh, if, if we're doing it as well, that we can help them.
Thank you very much, Council Hurdle. Uh, Mr. Spear, uh, is that a takeaway? Is there anything you want to add on that? Just for, like, that's from a small business or a staff, like for the arena perspective, or both?
Well, I mean, if, if, if staff at the arena are, you know, going to be checking for, you know, vaccine status and checking for, uh, you know, ID and these things coming in there. I'm, I'm predicting that they're going to receive the same treatment that, um, people in the community already are. Um, and are they prepared to deal with that? And, and is there anything that we can do to support them? And if so, then we can, we broaden that out to, to some of the businesses in the area too and offer them the same support.
Okay. Um, would that be a good one for, for a takeaway, Mr. Spear, to see if there's any, any programs?
Yeah, we've actually looked for stuff like this, not related to COVID, but I'll dig a little deeper, your worship. It's an excellent idea and there. The problem we ran into earlier was they were like three and five-day seminars. They really get into it. It's hard to do a short, shortened version of something like this, but I think I've attended stuff in the past that's the shortened version. So I'm gonna keep digging and see if I can find something.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. I will add, uh, that, uh, conflict resolution is important to kind of de-escalate situations, but I think I can speak for all of us that, uh, any abuse that any town official is receiving in regards to following the, the orders by the province of New Brunswick. I think, uh, unfortunately, we have to have a zero tolerance policy when it comes to abuse with our employees. Um, so, uh, you know, you have my full support. If anyone is causing any, uh, hardships on any staff, then obviously we want to rectify that situation in any means necessary. So I, I just want to add that, try to resolute it, but at the end of the day, some people, unfortunately, um, under this particular issue, uh, feel very passionate about it and, uh, it can lead to, uh, to situations that, to be honest, I wouldn't want to be in, so I don't expect staff to be either. Um, okay, anyone else? Counselor Heenan.
It's just, um, it's just a point that I would like to make. Um, I was fortunate enough to have to check for ID at a wedding on Saturday. And the unfortunate part is when you have the people who want to have a conflict, it doesn't matter what you do or how you do it or how you treat them, they're ready for a conflict. And I had one, it was his niece getting married and he forgot his ID at the hotel. I said, well, it's only two minutes away. You can go pick up. No, I'm not going. And I said, well, you have a choice. You either don't see your niece get married or the wedding gets postponed. So you have two choices. And I mean, that's great for me because I'm old enough and seasoned enough, but it doesn't bother me. However, I can see someone in another position having that same. However, I can see someone in another position having that same conflict. He was just out to be, he was just out to have a fight is really what it was. And there those people, unfortunately, there's not a lot you can do with them. You just have to. I I don't know what the answer is. Just say no, you can't come in. That's all. Zero. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Heenan. All right, um, so we'll move on from that one. Uh, and I think that takes us out of Counselor Neil's already, and there's nothing on our business tourism heritage culture. But there is a discussion for recreation, community service, it's regards to the Christmas programming for uh two thousand and twenty one, which would be R C S two one. Zero nine zero three. Uh, is that would that be you, Mister Spear? Leader, Mister Knopper?
Paul Walt, he can take it. Thank you, your worship. Um, so the report that you have in front of you, council, uh, highlights a series of looking at what normal practices are for council. From uh Christmas parade to the the skate with Santa downtown events. Um, last year, uh, with COVID nineteen, we scaled back a number of the events did uh alternatives, including bubble skate, which were six pretty successful. Uh, I believe we had thirteen, if not more, um, bubble skates that were for the public. So staff are seeking direction. I know we're a little bit over about three to four months out here, but staff are seeking direction as to what council would allow for. Uh, under the COVID regulations for Christmas, uh, in speaking with the the fire department, they're still willing to operate a parade again. As long as it's still within a green or or semi-green level, uh, cause as long as there may be the mandate of the province of New Brunswick, uh, for parades. I think it's a a safe bet. It's it's outdoors. Um, but other questions like the the Santa, the Santa party, uh, the Santa, anything like that. I think would have to be modified based on what's coming down the line, but staff are basically seeking directions to what council would allow or what we should start to plan for.
Thank you, uh, Mister Knopper. So there was uh four specific items on this one. It was the Christmas parade, the skate with Santa, Children's Christmas Party and the Christmas at the Ross Museum. Uh, let's just start at the bottom. So Christmas at Ross Museum, the Ross Museum's been operating with a COVID plan all summer. Would that be safe to say? And they're used to uh operating. So that one probably is status quo based on assuming a number of factors, but they can continue to plan that. Would that be safe to say?
Well, the struggle is going to be that, don't forget, there's decorators that have to be working in a confined space together, so that may make it a challenge. Um, it's also fairly um convoluted or congested, sorry is the word. Once they start doing the tours and stuff because of of the restricted hallways and things there. So I think right now we've told staff to to plan for it, but it could get canceled depending on the COVID regulations.
Okay. And the other thing would be to just check with this. I imagine the schools are probably the biggest contender, like attendance of that. It might be.
No, there's, it's just the two local schools, the last few years that go to it, but they bring in several people at the two or three nights they have it. But the they express concerns, even in the, when we were in the green phase a couple of weeks ago. If the volunteers would be comfortable coming in, because a lot of them are from senior community groups. And now with what's been going on with the Delta variant stuff, I'm I'm personally wondering and I have no questions to the volunteers yet, but wondering if we're gonna lose all our volunteers. So if you leave that, if council, the community may kick back. And so if council's okay with us trying to. To plan it, we'll see what we can do and certainly live within restrictions. And if we don't feel like we done safely, we'll cancel. But if you feel that you just don't want to take any risks again, like we did last year and and kind of postpone everything, staff understands will move accordingly.
Uh, I was just thinking of the schools aren't able to come. That that makes the decision a little bit easier because that's one of the major. Uh, I guess you could say attendance draws. I I'm fine with staff discretion on this one. I don't know if everybody else agrees. COVID's changing so much day to day. That um, a decision today may look a lot different in a week's time. So uh, does anybody object to staff's discretion on that one? I personally, that's why I'm like, I see. All right. So staff discretion on that one. Uh, we're working the way up. Children's Christmas Party. I I know Saint Stephen last year set up something with Plexiglas at the Garcelon Center. I don't know if there's any opportunity to do something like that, but if there isn't, then unfortunately, I I think we can already uh make the decision on the. The uh, the sitting on Santa's knee, unfortunately, um, you know what I mean? I just, I think we've got to be realistic about the challenges that we have. Uh, in in the timeframe of COVID, it's it's not going to be solved in the next couple of months. Um, so let's just get it in front of it. I will say that the staff report it did talk about uh upgrading Santa. Um, if uh, if you do have a budget to make that happen, I would certainly encourage that. It looks like the fire department was willing to pay half. Myself and the town's able to pay full. I I think that that would be a nice gesture versus get the fire department to do it, because we're lucky for all that they do. Uh, if if again, we can fit that in a budget, and that's just me speaking. I don't know if anyone feels differently, but um. Uh, under civic, I don't know if there's any civic funds that are remaining, uh, civic pride, anything like that.
We can, we can definitely find money for Santa, your worship.
Sounds good. Uh, and then the skate with Santa, I really don't know. Uh, it's it's so early. I don't know about you guys. It's just. I don't know what kind of that that looks like. I, would it be safe to say we could just book the ice time and make that decision a month out? Like, like, it's it's so much changes, I don't think.
That's fair to say, your worship. And last year, I think it was you that came with the good plan with the um bubble skates that we were just renting out the ice surface at twenty five dollars. Um, you know, for anyone in a in a continuous, in their bubble units could come in and rent the whole facility. And so if we're finding by the end of November, we're just not able to put everyone together, we could offer that to families in the area too. And so at least gives them an opportunity to skate together.
Yeah, that was extremely uh successful thing. I think that one goes that saying. And then Christmas parade again. Um, it it's just to me, I don't know about you guys, but it's too early to know. It's just, just. I I know you need direction, but it's we're 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 kind of just guessing right now.
Well, I I will say this, and I agree with you a hundred percent, but with the Christmas parade, we actually had it worked out to do the reverse parade last year. With the community college and I'm thinking, especially since they've upgraded their driveways and stuff, it'll even be better opportunity. So maybe we'll talk to them and the fire department, maybe just have that as a plan B. And if that's the way it goes, then we can set up. But it's just, we have to get out the word that we're gonna have the parade in order for people to start planning for decorating and volunteers and all that stuff. So if you're okay with that with plan discretion, maybe we'll look at that and.
Let's do that. If council on agreement, that makes sense to everybody. Okay. And then the last was obviously lobster trap, trap tree. Either way, I have no objections to that. It's outside. It's when you drive, it really, I'll tell you, it was pretty dark last year and just going downtown, really brightening up a lot of people's day. Because it was, it was really well done. So I was there anything else you needed around Christmas? I know we hammered through it and at times we sound like Scrooge, but um. Is there, uh, is there any other concerns?
Well, staff will keep you counsel informed of our progress as things roll along.
Yeah, the lights would be nice, like, you know, lights on the wharf and the life that surround the town.
Um, yeah, that stuff along.
All that, that will all remain. We just may not have the lighting ceremony because can't get that close.
Yeah, we did uh one virtual C H O last year that depending on what the temperature is at that time, uh, on around COVID, not the actual. Uh, we'll uh, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust the plan as required. Uh, all right. So uh, we'll keep moving along, uh, and in keeping in mind your guys' time. So we're under planning and economic development, Counselor Heenan.
Thank you, your worship and council. Uh, this is reference number P E D two one zero eight zero five. The subject is bylaw two one dash oh four. A bylaw respecting encroachment upon public spaces in the town of Saint Andrews, and this is the second reading. The background is staff has been working on the development of an encroachment bylaw to establish regulations on the use of town space. The bylaw provides an overview of rules, the processes of applications, approvals, permitting, appeals and penalties. This bylaw, under the authority of council, will provide staff with the necessary tools to review. Approve or deny uses in public spaces, including roads, parks, sidewalks, easements, right of way, et cetera, owned by the town. During discussions at the September eighth, two oh two one council meeting, staff was directed to make changes. Typical use and need for permits beyond one meter of a building facade to bylaw two one dash oh four. A copy of bylaw twenty one dash oh four with updates has been provided with this report. The first reading, your worship, was on September the eighth, twenty twenty one. The action and motion is that council grants leave for second reading of bylaw twenty one dash oh four. A bylaw respecting encroachment upon public spaces in the town of Saint Andrews. There is a second motion, your worship. Do you wish me to read it now or discussion?
No, we can read it now.
Okay, the second motion, your worship and council, is that council sets the date of Monday, October two five, twenty twenty one. At six thirty P M at the courthouse, well, at one twenty three Frederick Street for public hearing of objections. To bylaw twenty one dash oh four, a bylaw respecting encroachment upon public spaces in the town of Saint Andrews.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. Um, any questions on the wording of these motions? Just a quick one for you, Mister Spear. Is the chamber aware of this or the B I A or or both that we're working on this? Because I wouldn't really want it to catch them by surprise.
Probably not formally, your worship, so maybe we'll send out a notice to their two organizations for a fan out so they're aware of it.
It would be great before we set the hearing of objections, maybe even just to to just to hear a little bit from them. Um, just because if there's any more work that needs to be done, it'd be great to do that prior to the hearing of objections. Um, but uh, yeah, if you want to reach out, that would be greatly appreciated, um, just so they're in the loop. Uh, anyone else? Just one last chance. Uh, Counselor Blanchard.
This was, and it's a question, and I I don't know if it would be better, better asked at 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 the actual council meeting when we're when we're discussing this. But um, the question, I guess, relates to, we talk about sort of the property line of the individual businesses. Sort of that one meter zone where they can actually put the sandwich boards. I'm getting back to sandwich boards. But but where we now have the 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 walkarounds for many of the businesses in the downtown in the summertime. So they actually have essentially a patio area in the front of their their businesses. What then constitutes their their zone there? Like, are we still talking about one meter from their building? Because I wonder where they have chairs and tables out sort of in that area now. Is that considered sort of their property for the summer? Or or how is that being divided? So can they put, I guess my question is, can they put signage in that area? Again, outside of that one meter zone and would would they, would they have to, you know, go through this? That's that's sort of my question.
I, Mister Spear could answer, but I believe that becomes almost a temporary patio at that time. It's their own space. Is that safe to say within those ropes? And uh, if they put their sandwich down in that, it works. Is that correct, Mister Spear?
More or less, I guess, because of COVID, council's been very flexible about the use. And so we'd have to discuss if. You want to charge in normal times like Frederickton and Moncton and stuff, charge for that privilege to those businesses. I will say, actually, they did pay because we worked out a rental cost for the construction of the walkarounds, so they did pay a fee this year. Um, but something like that is actually supposed to be part of the encroachment bylaw where staff, they have to make an application to staff. It's not automatically given. They'd have to make an application every year to get that. And so let's say the Kennedy and, for example, where it's been successful, it'd probably be a yes in most years. But having said that, staff will always come to council early in the season and say, do you have any objections to this type of arrangement moving forward? And if not, then council can, or staff, sorry, can just automatically arrange that. Now, as far as things like signage and stuff, no, it's not meant for the back to the sandwich board signs that they're going to be able to be put on the outside end of the sidewalk. Those are always meant to be within that one meter from the front edge of the building, um, and not outside impeding pedestrian traffic.
Does that answer the question, Counselor Blanchard?
Uh, I I guess so, yeah. I I I could see certainly not outside of their area, yeah, because that in in many cases would actually be on the street. But I'm just sort of thinking within their patio zone, um, would they still be able to have their signage up? Because I I I actually see that downtown, so I I I that's that's sort of my question. Uh, within that patio zone, can they have a, could they have the sign up again outside of that one meter zone? Would they?
Oh, yeah, I I see what you're saying. It's a good question. I guess I'll have to. I I could probably be agreeable to that, but I'll have to double check with the R C to see if that's then tripping over planning bylaws. Uh, because of what's allowed in the decided section, but I understand where you're coming with that question and we'll have to see. It does make sense to allow them to put the signs at the outer edge of their patio section. I I see where you're coming from now.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Love that clarified for next week before we go, just to answer that. Um, okay, any other on that one? Sounds good. Okay, so uh, at this point, we've gone through uh motions. Uh, so we're in the review of the registers. I know we haven't been uh jumping into it line by line, but um. Kind of just going through it, uh, under finance administration, is is there anything that uh any staff member would like to bring forward or any member of council?
Your worship, can you just give me like two seconds? I want to make a note on the encroachment bylaw, then I'll jump over those. You've gotten ahead of me a bit. I apologize for delaying everybody.
No problem.
Your worship?
Yes.
Are we still having the October second meeting?
Uh, gotta grab my schedule here.
That's the full Saturday. I just want.
Oh, yes, yes, we are. And we're gonna do that uh in person. Uh, that's a long day to be on Zoom. Uh, so we're gonna be doing that at the arena and Mister Knopper is assured that we'll have plenty of spacing. Uh, and as well, I believe Counselor Gomishaw will be uh attending that one, so we'll be uh actually uh set up on Zoom as well. In case someone can't make it, in theory, I guess technically you could still zoom in if Counselor Gomishaw is. Is that correct, Mister Knopper?
That's correct, your worship.
Yeah, so I guess you have some flexibility, but the idea would be just to space us out, because a a full day is uh, it's quite, it's, you know, quite a long meeting on Zoom. Unless your counsel.
Thank you.
Uh, just while we're waiting on on Mister Spear, I just wanted to let you guys know I had met with M P Williamson uh to discuss. But then obviously the election was up and coming, so uh we'll do a follow up now that he's been reelected, but he is in opposition again. Um, so that one is very much live. Um, I I know that the green inclusive community buildings, grand infrastructure, you put that in my package. Uh, did you guys put it in everybody's package as well? Okay, so you guys have a copy of that. Sounds like there might be some opportunities for the town that we'll discuss at a later meeting. Um, the Wharf project, we we do have a, we do have a a a meeting coming up uh in regards to. Uh, some decisions that we need to start making around the Wharf and Market Square, so that'll be upcoming. Uh, and then uh, is there anything else under uh, it's, oh, sorry, I've jumped ahead to public works. Is there anything under finance administration? I don't know, Mister Spear, you're ready yet or not?
Um, a couple of things, your worship, I guess, um, well, just under there, just one, so. Uh, we currently have a bylaw sixteen oh three, a procedural bylaw for the organization operation, the council of town of Saint Andrews. And we had discussed that that was going to be reviewed, so I think um. And maybe counselor or sorry, the the clerk will correct me, but I think we're gonna try to have some dialogue before the end of next month. Probably my next committee meeting at the end of October, about any amendments we want to see. And if there's anything that council has noticed in the running of the meetings. Is what it's specifically about that you'd like to change, please feel free to let us know. This was a substantial change from the earlier bylaws we used to operate under, so we've been three or four years at it. But now it might be an opportunity to revisit, especially for a new council, to see if they want to kind of streamline or do differently to order of business.
Thank, thank you, Mister Spear. Uh, so we, uh, any member of council that has any suggestions on the procedural bylaw, please reach out. Uh, last week while you're on vacation, Mister Spear, Mister Knopper, I did have a brief work session, but um. I think you two will be reviewing it and seeing it was, it was very similar to what we had discussed our last meeting. But uh, I think it's time to put it maybe on paper for the rest of council to see that. It'd be a lot easier. Um, but it would be, uh, I guess you could say minimizing the number of special meetings we have and getting more of, let's say, what this committee meeting is, is getting more out of it than just reading motions. Uh, but yeah, more to come on that one. Um, under public works, was there anything, Mister Spear?
Yeah, a couple of things, your worship. Um, I'll hit the first. One, this one you've related a conflict of interest on, so maybe just I'll jump to that second.
Okay.
So council, um, that biological station is looking to put four-phase power on the wharf. Uh, they'd pay for it all because of the, they want to maintain the the Viola Davis. For interviews have seen that that's a coast guard boat. It's an extra long coast guard boat. Uh, and while the 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 three-phase power would be of minimal use to us, we don't really have a use for it. But they're paying for it all and maintain them as a customer. And for them, it would mean the boat could be kept in Saint Andrews. Otherwise, this coast guard, because it has to be plugged in, the power will likely uh reposition it back to Halifax. The only problem we're having is to create three-phase power. You might have to put terminals on the wharf or um. You know, the big boxes for the power like beside Market Square. So I've got concerns about it. But what I've left it with them, or I said, I'd bring it to you tonight, they have it often, they can do it in-house. Um, electrical engineer with Public Works Canada, who will give us a. Um, electrical engineer with Public Works Canada, who will give us a rough idea of what it would look like. And then if council's okay with it, they'd give us the money to go out and do a design and build. So we'd send it to two or three different electrical contractors who'd come back with different solutions. And council can decide which solution they like, if any of them. So I just want to see if you want to continue down that avenue or not. Instead, I'd bring it to you, but staff have a lot of concerns about it. Number one being, if we're gonna tear apart the wharf in Market Square over the next year or two, why are they putting it in, you know, a project that's probably worth over a hundred thousand dollars? But again, it's, we're trying to maintain their service here, being the Viola Davis. And so, you know, I'm not asking for you to commit to it tonight, but just to see if you're open to it. So I can say, yeah, we'll move to the next steps to see what this would actually look like. But I keep telling them, we have to see what we're committing to. We're not going to say yes and then end up with some big transformer on the wharf that's blocking the view of half the town. So if we can take it in in stages, so you know what you're committing to, is council okay for me to give them the go ahead to start the initial design stage?
Uh, yeah, I'll wait wait for all of council to weigh in if they if they wish. But uh, I think we need to see some more detail on the size of this, but the the big question to your point is to, for them to put it into the taxpayer of Saint Andrews to pay to remove it, to put it back in, it probably doesn't make sense right now. So um, I I think there there's probably a more detailed staff report that probably council will need to make a better decision on that one right now because of all the variables. And I know you don't have all those variables right now is why it's not done, right? You're still still in the process of having those discussions, but um, to put something in to take it out, to put it back in, doesn't really make sense.
No, but I guess, but they can do their in-house design, council will be okay with that. Then we can say we're not willing to accept it if if it's gonna look like this. And that's all I've said to them from the get-go, to be honest, is we gotta know what what you want to put out there. And uh, they said, well, will they commit to it? And they said, only if you tell us what we're committing to, so we just need that first step. Because they wanted to make sure if you guys were absolutely against it, they weren't gonna put any of their own human resources to it. It was just a deal breaker from day one, but if you're open to it, that's all I'll tell them is that you're willing to at least look at it. However, I will advise they need it built in about the next six to eight weeks. So they'll turn around pretty fast with the design for discussion, because they want the thing built before the winter season.
Sounds good. Space is a a premium at the end of the wharf, as we all know, so we'll have to see what the design looks like. But uh, I unless any member of council has more to add, I think we just need more information at this point to make a better decision. Um, okay, next one.
Uh, I guess, your worship, you have to take a timeout.
Okay, see you later, guy.
Not again.
Yeah. So council, really, just to follow up with our Victoria Terrace questions. So council is committed to um to disposing of that, but the current has brought up a good question and and it was one of my own mind is, do you want to attach a value to it? It's approximately sixty feet in width, what that the talk is right now. Adjacent landowners will get thirty feet of it. I can't tell you, I think it's envision it's about a whole block going east-west. Um, but I have no idea for value or how or how it work. And so we'll probably include a staff report for how much that is. So what the process we we have to do now is, once you dispose of, we gotta come to terms with the potential buyers and say, well, here it is, here's how much we want to owe, and it's up to them to do a title search and to make sure there's clear title. Believe it or not, that might get wee bit tricky, but they have to to look into it, because that land up there was originally owned by the church. And I'm not, uh, the Anglican Church, which owned most of the town at that, and I guess at one point in time. And so, but it's really back in the hands of the potential buyers to figure out a thing, get clear title to it. And then council will eventually have to offer to dispose it to them at either a one dollar, zero dollar or predetermined amount. And so um I'll come up with a staff report, may not necessarily, it's not a big hurry item, so it may not make this meeting. But probably in the mid-October or something, once we work out the things. But just to get you in line that you have to consider how you want to deal with that uh, moving forward. Um, remember it's taxpayer land, it'll lack your taxpayer asset, it'll add value to the potential buyers for sure. And so it's just predetermining if you want to give it because of potential, potential development. Or if you want, you know, that because you're disposing of a taxpayer asset, really, they should be paying some type of price for it. It's not the same as buying a full lot. It it will increase the value of their lots for sure, having this extra land. Thank you, and that's all. I just really wanted to bring you up and about what the next future steps of that was.
And thank you, Mr. Spear.
Thank you. So that takes care of that. Was that it for public works, Mr. Spear?
Yes, it is, your worship. Thank you.
Let's jump to public safety at this point. Was there any that you wanted or any member of council?
Uh, your worship, can I bring up just a quick topic?
Absolutely.
Uh, just a note for council, over the the summertime and the spring, we did receive a number of um, inquiries and concerns from the public in regards to speeding and some of the traffic regulations within the town. Uh, under public safety, uh, we will be bringing forward the uh, by law eighteen oh one, uh, regarding uh, vehicular traffic in the town. Uh, as well, this sort of ties in with the transportation master plan. So I think there should be a review of both and a review of the discussions that have come forward and the concerns from the public. Um, uh, for council to consider it, looking at modifications or changes. Um, and I would also recommend, uh, when we do discuss this with the, in a larger discussion topic with council, uh, that we should also consider doing a couple of public information sessions or or public consultations to hear from them if there's any additional changes before anything is modified with these documents.
Thank you. There has been a definitely an increase in the number of speeding complaints. I had another one again today, so. Um, okay, so the more to come on that one. Uh, so I guess moving along, I think we're on business tourism, heritage and culture. There's only one item there. I don't think we'll be discussing that tonight. So uh, through, uh, you, Mr. Spear, anything for Recreation Community Services or portfolio?
Maybe just as a head up, your worship, from the trail discussion, uh, the last council determined they'd like to have some public consultation regarding how um, basically the one point five million dollars is going to be spent. It's just once we get into that discussion in a couple of weeks' time, or week and a half time, council should have some opinions on that, maybe to provide staff direction. So we don't have to discuss it really tonight, but it's just how you envision how to consult the community and give us some direction, how you'd like to proceed with that would be much appreciated at that time.
Sounds good. So we'll visit, that's a bigger conversation, so we can visit that one later. Um, anything from anyone in council on that one? I know we're flying through them, but it's essence of time. Uh, planning economic development, anything there?
Um, we're gonna be talking about the Catholic Church parking request on Parr Street. It's really a capital item. I don't know if, if you want to mix it into the budget or if you want to talk about it separately. So we can have, I can put upfront that the staff is probably against it. Um, we didn't know if there's any value for money at that particular location, and there's other businesses in areas that would probably ask for a similar request, but you know, we can bring it forward for discussion on Saturday or have a more open discussion in open forum as part of a regular council meeting based on our findings. It's really whatever council feels they, what have, they have a bigger discussion on this.
It's our, the council, I think, since we're there all day Saturday, we'll just deal with it Saturday. Does that make sense? Because we'll be going through a lot of different projects and we can just, it it's just one of many. Um, so just to get it special treatment tonight doesn't really make sense, no disrespect to it. But there's, there's several projects that we'll have to debate, right? So uh, if council's good with that, I'll keep it moving. I think that's good. Um, okay, so that takes us through the registers. And if, anything else, uh, Counsel Gomishaw?
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, one thing that seems to have fallen off the register, and I know we deferred it to uh, to the environmental committee. But I I'd like to see it back on the register is the Declaration of a Climate Emergency. Um, that came up in the last council, it uh, it floundered in the uh, registers. And uh, it it seems to have have gone off the register. At every meeting, we have an opportunity to address uh, council concerns for ten minutes. So um, I I can certainly do that at each meeting, uh, talk about the environmental um, concerns I have with uh, us not declaring or or declaring a climate emergency. I think it's something that the town needs to take a more active role in. And so uh, I could certainly take up my ten minutes uh, at each meeting uh, going on and on 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 this topic. Or we could, uh, we could add it back to the registers if uh, everyone's okay with that. Thank you, worship.
We can definitely add it back onto the registers, uh, Counsel Gomishaw. So we'll obviously, if something's important to a member of council, we can add it back on. I will say that, but it makes sense for Counselor Blanchard maybe to take that back to our committee uh, and get their way in on what they think we should do in regards to that. As uh, I will say that 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 committee report was one of the most professional ones that I've seen in a long time. Uh, so I'd really like to see more continue to come from that group. Uh, it was an impressive report, to say the least. Uh, Council Blanchard?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, and I I can say as well, um, I actually have uh, some uh, uh, language, some wording on that. Uh, this, there's a number of communities across the country have done that. So I have several examples from some some different, uh, some different communities that have prepared that. So I'd be happy to, uh, again, take that maybe perhaps to the environmental committee and then and then bring it back with some potential modifications to town staff for, to have a look.
So Counsel Gomishaw, not that I don't appreciate your ten minutes, but would an army of you help the cause?
Uh, I I think that if school was rolling a little bit better, we'd be hearing a lot more from our young people. And as community leaders, we need to, uh, we need to step up and say that uh, that uh, this is something that's important to us. And when they do arrive uh, with their concerns and hopefully uh, they do come to speak to us about the the uh, the issues with the global warming and climate change that we've already, uh, we've already started some of that process. So, so I I I could save my ten minutes for other things. Thank you, worship.
Well, thank you. So it sounds like we have a a plan. It's back on the registers and Counsel Blatch will take that. Of course, I'm sure no one would mind if you wanted to attend one as well, if you're, uh, if you're around for that. So uh, I'll leave that with you and Counsel Blatch and look forward to a follow up that works for everybody. Uh, for myself, under uh, call it enough to, uh, there was a uh, a package that went out, uh, Mr. Gopin, Mr. Nopper, and then I even I talked to Mr. Spear that he's back. Um, it doesn't mean we have to do it, but uh, just looking at all options on the table, there is green space uh, down by, uh, I guess it's down Water Street past the garden homes. Uh, I don't expect that to be uh, to be met without some concern, but in the same sense, a a lot of people just assume that's part of someone's backyard and that land is actually owned by the town. So um, if you look at within the town plat opportunities to develop housing close to the N B C C, that is one of our few limited opportunities, because I'm a personal belief that our solutions that we're working in the subdivision. I'm not saying they can't help the N B C C, the N B C C students. But if you lived out there and had no car and you had to get groceries plus had to get class, you're not gonna have a very good experience living in our community. So keeping all options open, um, I I dove into that and I obviously, uh, thanks to Mr. Gopin. Uh, there's a little bit more detail there. By no means does this mean this is being issued, but I wanted to uh, weigh in council's opinion. I I again, I I know that people that live down in that area would have concerns. I understand that it's green space, but I also understand that there's opportunities with calls for proposal to ask for. Um, maybe it could be uh, some cash to go towards it, and then we use that to develop more street end parks, for example. Uh, where it's not just green space that isn't being used, but it's something that the community can enjoy. Because I don't know about you, if you saw what that fit is, and I don't have the number in front of me. But I've never ever seen anybody use that space in my life, uh, like uh, the trail, yes, but I've never seen anybody on that green space. So keeping everything on the table, if people in the subdivision uh, have to look at a call for proposals, I think everybody should. Um, and I'm not saying that we do it, but I want to keep all options on the table, as we all said, that housing's a major focus. So I don't know if anyone had any opinion on that at this time, but I wanted to bring it forward since uh, that was circulated to council. Because he, Counsel Neil?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. It was just a question, I guess. Looking at the map that was provided, this piece of land sort of adjacent to it along Queen Street? Is that um, I just questioning what that is, like it looks like it's zoned as service presidential. Is that something that's owned privately or?
Would that be the current buildings that are there now? Is that what the?
No, it's sort of above those.
Okay, that's. It's privately owned, but it's an opportunity for future development. Is that correct, Mr. Nopper? For uh, through the people that own the, some of the apartment buildings there, is that correct?
Uh, through you, from what I understand, uh, yes, it's it's owned by the the ones who own the other apartment complex that's there with the potential for additional development. Uh, and I will go to Planner Gopin if he had his hand raised there for a minute.
I was just gonna say that, that that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, so as you can see, it's got access from water, but uh, it also does in the back. So you could actually landscape water to hide something in there. Uh, again, I don't, I know there's other sensitivities to weigh in, but um, I, yeah, again, any other member of council just trying to weigh in your, your temperature on on that particular parcel land? Counsel Heenan?
I'm all for um, replacing green space that can be used by the residents and the visitors of the town. So if we take X and we make Y out of it, then I think it it's it's a very good move. Um, I like to see people be able to get out and enjoy the green space. And like your worship said, I've never seen anybody ever use that, and I go down there a lot. So if we could transfer that amount of space to another green space, I'm all for it. I don't want to diminish our green space, but if we can develop something that the residents can use, then I would be in agreement, your worship. Thank you.
Any, any other member of council, since that one was just thrown at you? All right, so uh, I'm just wondering next uh, next steps, uh, what council's appetite is? Is this something that we want staff to dive in, do to find out a little bit more? Mr. Spear just got back from vacation, so I do feel for him, because it was thrown on him as well. I apologize, Mr. Spear, for that. But uh, would it make sense for us to have more dialogue than bring back something to council after we've discussed it further or?
I guess, your worship, we can do the staff report. I think Mr. Gopin and Mr. Nopper have it about two, two thirds to a hundred percent done anyway. I I might suggest before we get too far, that you might look at the rezoning. We can discuss among staff what the best approach to take, but we could throw out the uh, first reading of the, I think there's a municipal plan amendment and a rezoning by law, and that would start the 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 public consultation process and really put it out there to the public to discuss is one way. Or if you want to make it, somebody can do a presentation on it to say that we want to do it and can do pre-consultation before we even do the municipal plan amendment and just kind of start the process and to get a feel about what the public reaction's going to be. Uh, but maybe the planner would have a different opinion than I.
Um, I definitely don't have a an opinion that the, there shouldn't shouldn't be some public input. The one um thing to consider is uh, if you start the rezoning process before you have um, an agreement with a developer, like that's, that's the opportunity to have the development agreement is through the rezoning process. There's other ways to have, you can have a purchase and sale agreement, you can have. There's other types of legal agreements, but if you want that Community Planning Act Development Agreement that runs with the land, um, you would want the developer to be applying for the rezoning, not not the town itself doing that. Um, although there might be amendments that the town wants to make to a particular zone, that could happen beforehand for sure. Um, so I might say put it out to the public first before you start the rezoning process.
So just to keep it consistent, I know that it has to be rezoned, which is a different, but to keep it consistent with Diana and Champlain or RP is not saying we are going there, but I I think to open it up with both of those conversations, we start with presentations just to educate people in the area, what we're talking about, the parcel land, because they haven't seen it. And we also advertise it, so people have an opportunity to see it, to see what we're talking about. Uh, does that, would that make sense as a good first step uh, on on how we could explore to go ahead or not to go ahead on that particular parcel?
Yeah, I think, yeah, Mr. Gopin is right. I guess it's kind of a cart before the horse syndrome or chicken and egg scenario a little bit, because people won't know what they're objecting to if we just say it's for development, but we don't know. But we just, all we know is we want development there, so it's a bit of a thing. But maybe through the pre-consultation, before we jump into amending any bylaws or development agreements, at least it'd give people an opportunity to say what they find acceptable. So, you know, single level, double level, forty-story apartment building, whatever the heck. That people would be able to voice their opinion kind of in 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 the, again, I'm using the word loosely, the pre-consultation phase before we move into the formal phase of doing it.
Agreed, and we may want to take it an extra step for consultation with the Pescatuno. Agreed. And we may want to take it an extra step for consultation with the Pescatumo Gotti to make sure that they don't have any concerns. Is it, although it technically isn't on, well, I, I don't know the technicality, but I just, let's just, let's just do due diligence there as well. So there's, there's lots of moving parts, but I, I, I'll be honest with you, as far as location proximity, um, you know, there's no question that it is one of the limited opportunities that we may have. And if, uh, someone was invested in that, and obviously with the town, uh, provides some incentive because that's a little bit different, that's a prime law in my mind. Uh, then perhaps we could use that fund to really develop some other green space for the community to really truly enjoy, we ear market. So, um, that, that's, that's the only way I see the green space trade-off making sense. If we take away there, we improve somewhere else. So, um, anyway, we'll leave it at that. I just wanted to have a temperature check, so it sounds like there's more, there's potential there to have some meaningful conversations. How about that? Um, is there anyone else for registers? Anything else that we haven't covered before we jump on to new business? Okay, seeing none, so nothing under new business. We're in a question period, Mr. Nopper, anything submitted?
Your worship, I haven't received any questions in regards to the agenda.
Sounds good. I am aware that during the hearing of objections, I did overhear that, uh, that Ms. Kearney had a few questions. So we'll make sure that those are probably answered next week. Is that the goal? Give staff some time to look at them?
Yes, and we discussed it during, when you declared a conflict, just to
Perfect, just making sure.
Yeah.
Making sure someone responds to those because technically speaking, those are question, questions related to something we discussed tonight. So.
Yeah.
Um, so we're into council, uh, we, we will be going to closed session, but, um, I just wanted to open up for councillor deputy mayor's comments at this time. Any member of council wish to bring anything up? I see deputy mayor Akogee.
Yes, um, this Thursday is, uh, Truth and Reconciliation Day, um, throughout, uh, Canada. And although our premier hasn't acknowledged it as a day of, you know, being able to take it off, we have done that with our municipality, but there will also, we are still continuing to have our, um, gathering, um, at the point. And we will not be doing it at the sewage wastewater, sewage wastewater treatment plant. Because, um, there's not enough space, we feel, if people come out and we need to self-distance. So we're going to, to move it slightly outside, um, it's still outside, but it will be over by our statue, um, the tree of life or the heart, whichever you would like to call it. But over there on the Hagan's Point, which we call the old dump site. So we will start there because there is more space there for people. And you can self-distance in your bubble. We will, um, give, it'll be a very simple ceremony as we've stated on the posters we've put up. The, on the social media, that it will be an introduction to Truth and Reconciliation that Judith Moses will do. And then, um, I will explain about the orange T-shirts. And then we will do a solemn walk, um, around the point. Uh, coming back to that position and leaving in silence. There will be a collection taken up and as we stated on the posters, that the collection will be used for a truth and reconciliation course at the St. Stephen University. So all the funds that we will collect will be given to St. Stephen University to hopefully, within a short while, be able to start a truth and reconciliation course for the students that wish to apply for the course. So that is our objection. We will have a smudging at the beginning, but there will be, we didn't want to host it in churches. We wanted to do it out in the open, so rain or shine, we will be out there. And, uh, Mr. Nopper informed me that we have a bullhorn, which I didn't know we had. So we're going to use that on Thursday because it will be difficult to hear on that day. But we are still continuing to celebrate, not to celebrate, but to have our ceremony on the point for Truth and Reconciliation Day, or the Orange T-shirt Day, uh, residential school survivors or residential school, the children that, um, the graves that were found. We will still have this gathering on the point. And if you have any questions, then I guess you can call me or you can call Judith Moses, or you can contact the town because, um, I've tried to keep them informed. But we want it to be a very solemn, but yet respectful, um, presentation. So please, if you can all come and wear an orange T-shirt, that would be awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, for all that. I see, uh, just one thing to add is the town hall will be closed that day. So if you're calling that day for questions, uh, they unfortunately, you'll, you probably won't get them answered as we've declared it a municipal holiday rightfully. Uh, I saw Mr. Spear, your hand?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, your worship, before I forget, that the T-shirts, the orange, uh, T-shirts that were produced by, uh, from the First Nations organization in the province are at the town hall now. So for any of council that is able to come down over the next day or two to pick them up, please feel free to drop in. We have them there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, and thanks again, Deputy Mayor Akogee for, for all that you do. Obviously around awareness especially, I think that's the most important thing right now as a community. And I can tell you that myself, I'll be there. So I look forward to being there with you. Any other member of council for any other announcements or comments? All right. Um, so at this point, uh, I myself have no comments, so we'll be going to closed session. So I'll be looking for a mover at 8:07 PM. Council moved in the closed session for the Local Governance Act, section 68 1D, the proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. Uh, I'll look for a mover. And I see Deputy Mayor Akogee and seconded by councillor Gumashel. Uh, all those in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's everybody. We are in closed session. I'll give Mr. Nopper just a minute to switch us over and then we'll begin.
You recorded. Go ahead. Go ahead.
A motion to come out of closed session. Councillor Hurdle, seconded by councillor Heenan, all in favor of coming out of closed session?
Aye.
We're all, we're all, uh, we're a closed session, uh, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Akogee and a seconder, uh, councillor Hurdle, all in favor of adjourning?
Yeah.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, council. Appreciate it. Thank you, uh, Mr. Nopper, Mr. Spear. Appreciate your time tonight and we're under two hours.